Like to call the Department of Public Works, go ahead please, everybody stand for the press.
(inaudible)
Glad to see everybody here. Come on right up, Chris. Morning, Chris.
Morning.
Yeah, Jim, come on right up. Okay. Morning, Jim.
Morning.
First on the agenda is the Highway Division. We have one resolution, I see. Would you like to explain that to us, Chris, if we think that's extra?
This is a resolution to put the Blue Ridge Road out to bid for a federal aid project.
Moved by Mr. Moore. We have a second on it. Mr. Flea, any discussion?
Yeah.
Yep.
Look, are they gonna through that forever wild section actually fix it, or just being needed again?
We're gonna fix it. We hope.
Because if they're not gonna let you fix it properly, there's no reason you're gonna pay anybody on that.
Well, we're doing, we're doing some ditch work, we're doing some drainage work, and I think that's a lot of the problem, so there's, uh, there's, they're supposed to be, the most of the work is in that forever wild section.
That's bad shape.
Mr. Moore?
Um, can you tell me, where are we starting? Are we starting right at the exit, or going all the way to the Boris Bridge, or, uh...
We're starting at the exit. It's, it's very close to that, yes, we're starting at the exit, we won't pass it, you know, up to bridge, so...
And that'll be done this summer?
That's the intent. It's the intent. We're asking to go out to bid now.
Well, I certainly hope it does include that forever wild section, because as you know, it's, uh, it's almost a hazard.
Any other questions or discussion?
Just, it is, again, it is federal highway aid, that means it's ninety-five percent covered by state and federal funds, our share is five percent, I don't know what your estimation cost being, but, um, our share would only be five percent, um, so, just so you understand.
Budget's two point four million.
Anybody else? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Resolution carries. Anything else, any questions on Highway? From the report? Do you have anything extra on Highway?
I have a few other resolutions to request, um, regarding my public safety building. Uh, Mr. Preston's not here?
Yes, he is. Oh, he just left.
The, uh, continuing issues with the generator, the power issues, uh, after a long struggle, we've received pricing from Graybar Electric to replace those relays that were suspect items. Uh, I'm asking for a resolution to award a contract to Graybar for sixty-three thousand seventy-five dollars to replace those relays and, uh, correct the power issue.
Moved by Mr. Richardson. Do you have a second on that? Mr. Garner, Mr. Richardson?
I'm sorry?
Yep.
Yes.
And Mr. Garner, yes. Okay, discussion? Tom?
Can you give a little more detail as to what they're doing? I mean, that's a lot of money for...
They're, uh, they're replacing four relays in, in the main switchgear itself, and they're also installing a ground fault main breaker, twelve-hundred ampere ground breaker. Uh, their feelings in the generator issues was it's a sensitivity level in these relays, um, and, uh, that's why part of the G L would come up, and part of the G L would not come up when, uh, the generator turned on, and then by adding a ground fault circuit breaker, the main circuit breaker, um, they felt they'd take care of some grounding issues that may have been allowing a little bit of voltage to come back through the system.
Which would trip out the ground fault, if that's happening.
Uh, these will go in very fast, but not, uh, they really think it's a sensitivity issue in those four relays, so...
Okay, are we a budget for that, Dan?
And we're, actually, what I'm gonna recommend you do is take it from the G L project itself, there's still one point two million in that account. Um, we have some issues with that account, there's still some ongoing lawsuit issues relative to the tougher, um, contract that was taken over by the, um, insurance brokers, um, but, um, we feel there's more than enough available to settle that issue and address this as well.
We have no legal standing with the manufacturer of the equipment that's in there, I mean, we can't, I mean, is it a fault of the relays, or is it, or do we as the fault on our end with the, with the grounding issue?
Well, that's legal recourse, I can't answer that question, Tom, um...
If I may, I question this, when Jim and, uh, Jim and Chris came up and talked to me on Friday, I think it's one of those things, and just to bring Mr. Preston update, we're talking about a resolution on the floor to replace the generator problem, not the generator, but what needs to be done to get the generator work when the power source goes out and the power source comes back on, the A C. And I think it's something that was cut during the G L project that we should've done. There was a lot of things during this G L project that we should've followed through, as you well know, we should've followed through, 'cause you were there at the time, but because of the interest of money at the time, we cut it, and think this should've been done, what he's talking about doing now should've been done when we did the G L project, and we didn't do it for the lack of function.
Yeah, the generator issue came after the fire, we weren't aware of it, why they...
No, but there's things that should've been put in there to protect us on this case.
When they did the history, remember, Dan, uh, Chris, I don't think you were here, but they came, I don't know if it was Square D Center representative or who it was, and they did a whole history, they were there for a day or more, what did that, I mean, did that show anything whatsoever when they were locked onto the...
It, it would, they, essentially ended up doing is recommending that we get somebody in to study those relay switches and determine whether or not they were working or not working properly. The problem is that now you're so, if, once you're past six years, I don't care what contract it is, once you've exceeded six years, your recourse is gone, um, you just don't have any recourse once a contract has exceeded six years, and you gotta remember this thing opened in two thousand and eight, um, so you're, you're back, you know, pushing eight years now, so there's really no recourse for going after any contractor at this point, because it's past the six-year contracts. So, for us, I mean, the real issue right now is we just can't keep having the jail go dark, um, so if we have to spend this money, we do have it, fortunately, there was money left over in that, um, G L project, um, so the...
I, yeah, I understand that, and I support that, the concern that I have is that, it sounds as though there might be other issues, I mean, if you install a G F I, G F C I main, there's a reason they're, they're doing that, which is super sensitive, so if you've got other issues out there, on the line side, on the, when you're on National Grid, or NICEG, we might discover more prob, I mean...
Well, you're, you're correct, but if it trips, the generator should kick out. The issue has been, hasn't been with the, the generator turning on, or the generator turns off, it's been about...
Won't pick, won't pick the load up.
What's that?
I said it doesn't pick up the entire load.
That's, that's correct, that's, that's due to these relays, is what we're getting told by the Square D, you know, reps that... It's complicated transfer situation, uh, the generator itself has seen the issue, it has to be, the way that the automatic transfer switches are seeing power from it. We found out a lot last fall, when there was a scheduled power outage by National Grid, where the first morning, when they shut down, the G L, it didn't come back automatically, and, and staff had to, to work, and it took a couple hours to get everything back on. The next day, when they brought it back through the normal, the normal path, it did, so, 'cause National Grid shut down power two days in a row. The first day they shut it down, and then they backped it from a different location, so I think it was receiving a different wavelength, and these relays weren't seeing line power, okay? It's, uh, you know, I, I can only go with, we've had, uh, a lot of meetings with Schneider, Electric, Graybar, uh, we've had an electrical engineer from A E S involved at the same time, and, and this is their recommendation, done a lot of coordination with, with Sheriff and the other sheriff, try to make this happen.
Are they gonna guarantee that this is gonna correct the problem?
I don't think anybody guarantees anything nowadays.
Well, when you're spending sixty-seven thousand dollars...
Yeah, we spend a lot more than that in a lot of places around here.
I'm just saying that...
I mean, this is something that has to be done, so we're kicking the horse, you know, let's get it done.
Now, I understand that, but before we do it, I'd like to be sure that they feel this is gonna correct the issue.
It's not gonna hurt it. You know?
It might not, and maybe some other issue out there, but he just said, we've been through all kind of engineers looking at this, and we're not experts, and this is what you hired these people for, is to listen to their advice. Mr. Monte?
These are the original generators that were put in, so I understand you're saying this is eight years ago, were they tested to see if they were able to run eight years ago?
Yeah.
And they were continued generator tests down there that they do periodically? Is this that schedule?
Yeah, Richard can answer that better, but I don't know.
They're all, they tested.
But they, they cycle most a week, I believe they test it most a month, and this problem just arose, or it's been there, it's solved in there?
It's been there.
The, the, your, your issue is, if the power outage puts on or off, we bank the best. The generator doesn't break the power, so it doesn't give a anybody. That doesn't also give a board straight power, so the generator, power's on, so it doesn't give a anybody, the jail's a government.
I, I understand that, it just seems to me it was, but it can't, can't be the dead ones, there was a design flaw eight years ago.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't question that, Jim, I think they're probably flaws.
And if you buy a set test, it's usually working, and on test, well, and on work, uh, a week later, we actually have a emergency disaster.
Anybody else?
Did it ever work properly, a hundred percent, since the time was put in? They had issues with it right in the beginning.
I'm not sure, I, I know it works when they, like Richard said, that when they do the test, it seems to work, but then when the power is actually out, and we're looking for a restart, it doesn't do it, but I don't think it ever has, to be honest.
No.
I don't think it's ever worked correctly, probably.
But I gotta agree with Tom, I would like to see a guarantee of this thing, I mean, it's not rocket science, it's, it generates all over the world.
We can hire somebody else, then.
But I, I think they should have a...
Speak under the rules and hire somebody else, I don't care.
I don't care who you hire, but they shouldn't be able to, if it, if it should work the way it should, that's maybe...
Mr. Monte?
I've, that's the statement, that generator, as it says, should be doing, you've got different phases, that generator's fully capable of running.
Yeah, this generator, the generator doesn't seem to be the problem, it's really in the relay switches, it's the switching over that creates the problem.
And that's what this...
That's what this is addressed, in terms of guaranteeing, Graybar is the company that we're suggesting do this, I'm sure they're gonna guarantee the work they do, but that doesn't mean that something else isn't gonna happen that's gonna affect the process here, but I, you know, we can't say that, sitting here now, um, but I know this, the one thing I do know, is if the power goes out again, Richard's gonna be in the dock, I know.
Guarantee up, yeah.
Where's NICEG on all of this? Have they, I mean, I know they've gone in, they, I mean, you got a three-phase system there, Jim, as you understand, right, so if you've got a power outage, and those sensors, those relays are sensing any kind of voltage, on a three-phase system, you're gonna bank out the different circuits, and if it's sensing on one of those phases anything, that may be the reason why it's not picking up on one leg, but, um, so have they explored, oh, I'm certain that they must have, but...
I can't give you all the history, Tom, as it's been going on for six, seven years now, um, um, as far as, just to go back to Graybar for a second, um, Graybar, this, this is going to require an eight to ten hour shutdown, and NICEG is gonna have to be there most of the time, because they're gonna be bringing line power back on and off a few times during this, this power outage. They're going to try to recreate some situations where we saw it happen before, but can they recreate every situation? No, I don't think they can, so I think that's why I can't guarantee anything. If, again, the generator seems to work, you know, you know, Tom, more than anybody, what NICEG or National Grid is gonna say, well, our power is good, it's within F C C requirements, alright? So, uh... What Graybar says is a sensitivity issue in these relays, and that adding a ground fault breaker is gonna help them this way.
Sheriff?
I just wanna, you know, I'm hearing what people say in January, it's not the generator, it's the switches, the generator is always provided for these services in a public safety building, it's always done at directly, that was out of line, it's the actual security guard of the jail, so the generator is what it's supposed to be, it's the switching issues in there that are, that's what we're...
Not providing the good rational statement.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Do you wanna vote on it, or do you wanna hire somebody else to study it?
Yeah, let's vote on it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carries. Thank you. Any, what else?
Yeah, uh, I have, I have one other resolution, and it's regarding fish hatchery, as a result of this morning's fish hatchery committee meeting. Uh, a few meetings ago, did a resolution to go out to R F B for asbestos removal and mold removal, so what I'm asking for today is I've received proposals, um, from Atlantic Testing, and a proposal from A E S North East to, um, provide design and testing services for mold, mold, and asbestos, so I'd like to do a resolution to award that, it's approximately eighty-five hundred dollars to Atlantic Testing, and the resolution for A E S North East was twenty-five hundred dollars to do an engineering report regarding the speedies permit, and, um, and I'd also like to ask for the use of some of the capital reserve money to start installing some windows in, uh, building, current houses to office, uh, to try to deal with some mold relation issues, and do that with buildings, brown stuff, so, I'm asking...
Somebody, we got Mr. Moore, Mr. Manal? Mr. Aaron, unless I'm missing it, I don't see you on here. Uh, Mr. Moore?
It's not the chat room.
Hmm?
It's not the chat room.
That doesn't matter, not obviously.
Alright, alright, alright.
But Mr. Moore's seconded it for you. You gotta be on this committee to vote on it.
Alright.
Okay.
All seconded, that's what I'm doing.
There's already been, by Mr. Manal, seconded and Mr. Moore. Any other discussion in that? A rowdy committee today. Mr. Aaron?
May I speak, please?
Any, any record on the board can speak at a committee, but they just can't...
For years, we've done nothing, but, uh, you write stand aids, and some people, like, exercise the use of record bars, when it comes, came time for the fish hatchery. Now, we're talking about it the right way, and, uh, I think you'll find that it'll be a nice investment for this county.
Very good. Anybody else? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Jim?
That's all I have.
Okay, we'll go on to buildings and grounds. Anybody have any questions on the buildings and grounds report? If not?
I just have one comment.
What?
How much this building looks now.
Thank you.
Yeah, the girls have done a really good job.
Really have, yeah. The next one.
Very good. Good comments, we don't want. Mr. Aaron?
And I'm looking for the tree, is it visible or what?
What tree?
Well, there's a sign out there, it says, there's a tree there.
Oh, I, I never noticed it, tell you the truth.
Donated by Iowa, it's gone, somebody stole it.
Okay, moving on to the janitors' report, anything on that, any questions? Okay. Health and safety and codes, any, anything on that, any questions for Chris or Jim? Okay, moving right along, public safety building, we already did the generator, anything else? Nothing else on that, good guys. Engineering? Any questions on the report for engineering? Okay. Fish hatchery, we took care of that too, anything else on the fish hatchery? Okay.
They've begun stopping, uh, so...
Okay. Miscellaneous, I don't know what that is, but anything, anybody have anything under, anything extra, besides what we already reported on? You guys are all set there?
The only thing I have, I have one thing for the, uh, I got an email from Shannon up in Lake Placid, the Household Hazardous Waste Day, the dates are, um, if I can even see them, June fourth and July thirtieth.
July thirtieth?
Yep. Lake Placid and North Hudson.
Okay, I do wanna, I talked to Jim, um, about the possibility of setting up a third site in Lewis, um, if that's possible. We spent about, um, the total amount we spent last year was about forty-five thousand, we budgeted forty thousand, um, but we get fifty percent reimbursement from D E C, so that means our cost is around, you know, twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand, I think, under the forty thousand we budgeted, we might be able to fit a, a third site in there, if you wanna try that, um, I know it, you know, it really comes down to people, whether they wanna drive further or not, now we are charged based upon the amount that, that's actually collected, um, but, um, I think it's probably worth seeing if we could get a third site in there and cover it under the forty thousand.
Moved by Mr. Scazababa, do you have a second on that? By Mr. Garner? Tom?
I got just a site, does the second highest tonnage in the county, Mariah.
Wait a minute, the resolution was to do Ann Lewis.
You moved the one from Lewis, it was too bad.
Next year we'll do Mariah, alright?
Not to mention all the surrounding towns.
You can bring all your stuff over to North Hudson.
They already do.
They do?
Tell them where you're bound.
Mr. Manal?
Yeah, we find it, uh, their tonnage is going down, as we have, I mean, originally it was high, but now, is it getting less?
In terms of the overall garbage?
Yeah, hazardous.
Oh, hazardous, yeah, I think we actually increased, we're, we're actually, we're actually getting more, I think it's getting more advertised, I think people are understanding that it works, um, they understand that they can just put the stuff in the back of their truck, they drive up, and people just take care of it, and it is a pretty convenient service, and it is a great way to get this stuff out of the, out of the waste stream, instead of having them throw it in a bag and throw it in our dumpsters, so, um, I think these are well worth the effort, and D E C does provide fifty percent funding, which is, makes them more cost effective for us, so, I do think it's a really worthwhile.
And having one in Lewis, you get more too, I mean, North Hudson and Lake Placid or North Alba, it's a good, good site with Lewis, but if you want the Mariah, nobody wants to go there.
Well, they, they obviously do when they...
They obviously do when they wanna get rid of their C and D and garbage. Can you take in, um, electronics on this? In other words, 'cause we have to charge for the, any screen with mercury, and there's a lot of things now that they used to be able to get rid of for nothing, now we have...
Yeah, I, honestly, Tom, I don't know that they do that, but I, I guess I would like to see what they actually do with the state budget, because the state budget has said that they will start to provide some funding for municipalities in reference to e-waste.
Yeah.
Um, if in fact that were the case, it may be that we could set up a day similar to this to do for e-waste, if we could get some reimbursement from the state.
Right.
So, let's see what the budget governor actually does.
Anybody else? Not all of them. Anything else for Chris and Jim?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to thank Chris and his crew, uh, great job they did on the lake shore road down there, cutting brush and stuff like that, had a lot of compliments on it.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much, guys. Next on the agenda is Dave Reckon. Oh, Chris, don't run away, I may have to, I have to come back up, there's another resolution on the bottom, I think that's from you.
We can do it.
We can do it without you.
Dave?
Morning, sorry, I, uh, was a little late in my report, I did get it in there for, um, this morning, I was out of town doing training last week, um, just a couple things I wanted to, I wanted to highlight, was that, um, under our agricultural funds that we bring to landowners, uh, we were able to identify some additional funds, uh, that are gonna be coming through the USDA funding program, that are gonna bring about fifty thousand dollars to hopefully bring a couple of new, uh, what we call the high tunnels, to try to extend the growing season to local farmers, and we've already had quite a few calls and interest, uh, a lot of, a lot of our farms are very interested in that, and, uh, extending their growing season so they can get started earlier, and, um, and go into later in the season, be able to get their crops out, a lot of them are, are working together with local, um, restaurants and local stores, and that, and that gives them an extended opportunity to compete against the, um, crops that are grown in other areas, um, and gets our local economy some, some money that comes back to our Essex County farmers. The other thing was, the, the meeting I went to last week, uh, it was announced by the Commissioner of Ag and Markets, that there's gonna be a new certification program for local fresh fruit and vegetables, and I think it'll be a great way for our local farmers to, to, uh, get New York certified, and, um, they're trying to work through that certification program, and, and the governor really wants to promote those, uh, those local economies and getting that fresh fruit and produce out, and, uh, put a New York certified label on it, so we can, um, really, do really good local branding to try to, try to show what, what New York is offering out there. Um, the only other thing I have under, under soil and water, is that I've been working closely with, uh, with D P W on, um, on doing some work at the fairgrounds, and I have a small grant to do some stormwater management, and, um, I'm hoping to go out, and we're, we're trying to go out to bid on, on some drains at the, uh, fairgrounds, to try to collect some of the water that runs down the road before it goes down into the stream, so we'll hopefully get those installed this year as part of that grant, um, I'll have to work with our, our board to try to go out to bid for those. Um, the only thing to comment on the, um, the household hazardous waste pickup that you guys just discussed, is that the, there is a state program for our local farmers, uh, and they are doing a local program, again, it's nice to have it within the county, the trouble with the farmers is, I think there's gonna be one, and I believe the closest one to our area might be up in Plattsburgh, but they do offer for some of the agricultural producers on their pesticides and other chemicals, um, that they can take them there, because a lot of times, uh, some of the farms especially aren't allowed to come to the, or they aren't the household hazardous waste, so that gives them an opportunity to get rid of those chemicals. Um, dropping down to the forestry, um, we've been having discussions, and, um, since we talked about going out to bid for the U T V, we've been working together, and, um, um, Jerry's had discussions with, um, the sheriff, on that the sheriff has purchased a U T V under a homeland grant, and we're working together with them on seeing if that would be able to be utilized at the county forest, so I'm trying to work together with them to see, so we're holding off on putting that bid out, uh, if it looks like it'll work out, we'll try to utilize that piece of equipment that the county already has. The other thing we have done in discussions at the Soil and Water Board, is that we've talked to the county, we have gone out to bid, and I will bring it up at the next meeting for a trailer, uh, the concern is, if we're taking this piece of equipment from one place to the other, uh, U T V is a little bit large to try to load into the back of a pickup truck, so we're looking at, at getting a hold of a, a trailer that's large enough to do it. At this point, we do a lot of work with the Soil and Water District that's moving things around with a trailer, uh, but we utilize my own personal trailer, and, and I don't believe it's large enough to hold that, um, so we'll work on that, I'll come back to the next meeting to discuss that. Uh, the good news I have is that our, our timber sale in Lewis is being completed, I'm hoping it'll be all wrapped up in the next couple weeks, now that, uh, the weather's gotten cold again here for this week, and, and hopefully it's dried up a little bit again, that they'll be back to work and, and wrap up. Um, along with, we, we had the original bid, uh, we also got some... wrap up, um, along with, we, we had the original bid, uh, we also got some additional money for the county because we, we moved the log landing and it creates, uh, additional parking there for recreational facilities, and on top of that, in the meantime, the, uh, county of Lewis, that was, uh, the timber harvester, and they found that there was something, we had already marked that were leaning towards the road, they were concerned would come down during a storm, and they would have to, you know, have to be out there to open up the road, so they've identified those trees that were right on the edge of the road that they thought were concerned, and so the, the, the harvesters marked them, we looked at them, we agreed that they're, they're trees that are close enough to be a potential hindrance, and there was enough trees that we feel, uh, uh, we sent out a, a total on it, so we're hoping the county will get a little additional, and it's not gonna be a big windfall, but it will be additional money that we'll get from that timber sale. And I believe that's all we have for the forestry and soil and water report, any questions?
Mr. Marnell?
What do we ever do with the trailer, board of election spot, that you...
We still, we still had that, we actually end up using that quite a bit for ourselves, our IT, we take all of our, um, e-waste material up to Plattsburgh in that trailer, but it's still, it may be something that can...